We're gonna call to order the Corcoran Planning Commission meeting, uh, April third, twenty twenty five. I'll start with roll call, Commissioner Lynn. Commissioner Hargreaves. And Commissioner Kazaki. And I would invite you all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and next we'll move on to ask staff or any of the fellow commissioners if there's any, um, amendments needed to tonight's agenda. And if not, then would someone please make a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
Sure, no, uh, changes from staff's point of view.
I would make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, nay. Okay, and then we will formally open up the, uh, open forum. Open forum is an opportunity to be heard, um, regarding any issue that's not on tonight's agenda. So if you're here and you'd like to make, uh, or address the commission, um, with an issue, you are welcome to come up to the podium. We only take in-person comments. I'm assuming you guys are all here for the item on the agenda tonight, though, based on our extra little fuzzy hurried visitors. Um, so if there's no one here who would like to address, uh, the commission during open forum, then I'll make a motion to close the open forum.
I'll second the motion.
And all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, and that takes us to approving the minutes from the March sixth meeting. Does anyone have any notes or changes? Okay, Commissioner Lynn?
I do, um. Okay, I don't think we have page numbers, so. Under the motion for recommendation of approval for preliminary plat, I had voted nay, and the notes say motion passed three zero.
On which issue, the first one?
Um, okay, let me, let me count the page we're on. It's, it's under, um, the ChazTech family farm. Okay, so the motion. Let me know if you follow me.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I have you saying nay.
It says motion pass three zero.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Specifically, it above it, it says voting nay Lynn, but then it does say motion pass. Yep, it should just be three one, motion pass.
We can make those updates.
And then one other one is, um, on the last page. It says that I mo- made the motion and seconded it.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't remember who seconded it, but I can't do both.
I would have seconded it, yep.
We can make those corrections.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, and with that, um, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from, uh, March sixth, twenty twenty five. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, and that takes us to tonight's new business, which is a public hearing, city file twenty-five dash zero zero five on the commercial kennel zoning ordinance amendment. And I believe you're doing the staff report right?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the only item, uh, under, uh, new business tonight is a public hearing for a commercial kennel zoning ordinance amendment. Uh, this is a request from Marine and Jeffrey Clipperton, were requesting approval of a conference of plan amendment, uh, which would allow, uh, commercial kennel operations as a permitted use in the rural residential district. Um, this request would allow the applicants to expand their existing commercial kennel operations at one zero eight zero zero Trail Haven Road. Um, so just some background on, um, the request and previous ordinance. The applicants in March two thousand and five received approval of a conditional home occupation license, um, which has allowed them to operate their, uh, commercial kennel facility over the last, uh, twenty years. In twenty seventeen, um, the council at that time directed city staff to revise the zoning ordinance to eliminate commercial dog kennels as an allowed use, uh, in all residential districts throughout the city. Uh, and that, that ordinance was, uh, approved in, on June twenty eight, twenty, twenty eighteen, uh, and was, uh, voted, uh, three, three, three yay and, uh, two abstain. Um, so our ordinance identifies two types of kennels, commercial kennels, which are a structure or premise where dogs are kept or possessed uh, for the business of boarding, breeding, grooming, or training to profit. Uh, whereas hobby kennels are structures or premises that are located, uh, in residential areas, not operated as a business for the sale, breeding, for the sale, breeding, grooming, boarding, or training, uh, but rather as a hobby wherein the dogs are kept exclusive, exclusively, uh, for personal or family pets. Uh, so the zoning districts where, uh, commercial kennels are allowed are in the rural commercial, neighborhood commercial, and community commercial, whereas, uh, the hobby kennels are allowed in all districts throughout the city. Uh, so currently there are only two remaining legal non-conforming, uh, commercial kennels in the residential districts. The All Seasons K nine Country Club, which is, uh, the Clippertons' business, and then the Red Barn Pet Retreat, the original facility on Steeg Road, which is owned, um, by Daniel Benjamin. Um, so some background on, uh, some code enforcement history, since that was part of the reason for the amendments in twenty eighteen was concerns over, uh, noise nuisances. Staff reviewed complaints over a sixteen-year span, uh, on all of the uh, properties that contained a commercial kennel, active and inactive, and of all those properties, um, there were only two complaints that the city received, neither of which were related to the commercial kennel or noise nuisances. Uh, staff reviewed some, uh, of the standards and zoning ordinances, uh, of our neighboring municipalities and found that, uh, appears that four out of the six that were researched, um, allow kennels within residential and rural residential districts of, of some sort, whether it be through a conditional use permit or an interim use permit. Um, staff found that many of these included some sort of performance requirements, um, whether they be licensing through the CUP or IUP, um, minimum lot size requirements, which we saw was typically two acres or more. Um, fencing requirements to ensure that the dogs don't, um, run loose on the neighboring properties. Um, and having them open for inspections, just to ensure that they're, um, meeting health requirements and, um, minimum, minimum setbacks, uh, outdoor facilities, so that the animals aren't confined indoors all day, um, and sound mitigation specifically for kennels that have a shared wall with another use. So, based on, on that research and the history, um, from the code enforcement side, staff finds that this request is reasonable and would recommend that, um, the ordinance be amended to reinstate this use as an, this use as an interim use in the rural residential district, um, with the following performance standards. Uh, commercial kennels must have a secured fenced area to prevent dogs running at large. Uh, this fenced area must contain at least thirty-five square feet per dog and shelter from the weather. Uh, and each, uh, kennel facility must be set back at least seventy-five feet from any residential structure of another property owner, uh, and must comply with all setback requirements identified in section ten thirty point zero two zero. So at this point, staff recommends that you open the public hearing and take testimony. Um, and then we recommend approval of the draft ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance, make, uh, commercial kennels as an interim use in the rural residential district. Uh, we also recommend approval of the draft ordinance approving the findings of fact for that ordinance amendment.
Alright, thank you, Dwight. Okay, at this time, we would like to open the public hearing. Um, and this is an opportunity for any members of the public to, um, come up to the podium and, uh, address the commission regarding this agenda item specifically. Um, we also will take anyone else and then we'll give the applicant a chance to speak direct, like, if you want to, you're not required to, but if you'd like to. So, uh, if anyone else wants to come up to the podium now would be the opportunity, just state your name and address for the record. Don't feel like you have to go. We won't put you on the spot, but what, um, but now is the time. And if you're not interested in doing that, that's totally fine, then we will make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
And I will second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Um, so now we'll, we'll give the applicants an opportunity, if you would like to, you know, address the commission. We did get all of the notes in the staff report as well, so we've been reviewing it. Um, don't feel like you have to. If anyone has questions, then maybe we would ask you to come up to the podium and answer a question if we have one, but just wanna give you the opportunity. Okay, and at that point, if there is a, um, commissioner who would like to begin discussion, I would hand it over to you.
I guess, um.
Commissioner Kazaki. Yes, go for it.
Um, so we didn't have a lot of complaints last time around. The moratorium was put into place because there were too many requests for kennels.
I believe at the, at the time, and this is predates me, but from my understanding, at that time, there were, uh, there was concern of an oversaturation with the number of, of, um, conditional home occupation licenses being requested. At that time, there were four throughout the city, um, now there, it are only two. Um, and staff hasn't received too many requests for commercial kennels, so I don't, I don't believe that to be, um, as much of a concern as it, as it once was.
I guess my concern, you know, living out in this rural residential area, sound really travels. There's nothing to block it. I mean, you'll hear somebody's stereo or something coming, you're not even sure where it's coming from sometimes because it can travel quite a ways. So my concern is the outdoor areas. And if there's, if there could be some kind of requirement for fencing, solid fencing, and I've even heard about, um, like acoustic sound blankets on the fence also. I guess if you're seventy-five feet away from a kennel full of barking dogs, that could be a nuisance. I mean, I, my sister lived next door to one dog who barked all the time, and this was in Corcoran, and, and that was pretty rough. So, my daughter worked at a doggy daycare, and her first couple weeks there were pretty rough because the dogs bark a lot. I mean, almost constant barking at, at these facilities. My, from what I've heard, my experience with it. So, um, some kind of mitigation, sound mitigation would be my concern. Whether that's screening, like evergreen screening, um, sound blankets, fencing, solid fencing, um, farther away from residential, although the way sound travels, I'm not sure what that distance would be. Um, and then even knowing when, when the dogs would be outside, how long would the dogs be outside? They wouldn't be outside after certain hours, or?
We could add that as a, as a performance standard, or it could be something, if this were approved as an interim use permit, that could be something that's also tied to each individual interim use permit. Um, you, I don't think you could go either way with it.
Yeah, that, that's my concern, the, the sound, sound travels, dogs bark a lot, a lot of dogs make a lot of noise. Um, I think I, I read somewhere that the noise levels can exceed a hundred decibels, and like a chainsaw is a hundred and ten, motorcycle's ninety-five. So it's loud. That's, that's all I have.
Does somebody else want to? Or have anything they wanted to discuss?
I, I don't have any, I guess, um, I wasn't as concerned about noise or necessarily concerned about this application, given that you've been running for twenty years and no complaints, it's really impressive. Um, so I didn't have any concerns there. I did have questions, the other two kennels. So there's two including this one, or there's three?
This is one of the two.
This is one of the two, okay. Um, I was gonna ask how long that one's been operating.
That's the other one that is, the only one that's non-conforming is the home site, but they're the ones that's that are building.
Yeah, right, that's what I thought. So this would be the only rural residential one to continue.
I believe theirs is still, the main site is still rural residential.
The?
Of Red Barn Pet Retreat.
It's not rural residential, it's zoned urban reserve right now. Um, and I, my underst- understanding is that they're intending to continue using that in conjunction with the facility. So that will continue to be illegal, non-conforming use, um, but this would be the only one in the rural residential specifically.
Okay, cuz my other, you know, you think about justification and explaining for future applicants and, okay, but if they're the only existing one, apart from that one, that we would be continuing based on the fact that they've been running for twenty years peacefully in the community, I see that as positive, my opinion.
Like, am I mistaken, though, isn't this to change the zoning so that anybody could open a kennel in the rural residential area? I don't have any problem with an existing one that hasn't had any problems, and I don't think I would have a problem with you expanding it into training either because you've, you've been operating and there's no complaints and.
It is a request to change the zoning ordinance amendment, however, anybody who wanted to create a new business would still have to get an IUP. So it's not, they couldn't just begin. Um, but then changing the zoning ordinance amendment allows, um, this business that's been operating in Corcoran to now add a different, um, service to their.
They couldn't do that without changing the, the ordinance.
They, yeah, correct, they wouldn't be able to expand without amending the ordinance.
They couldn't get another I, IUP or.
Correct, yeah, this is no longer, and.
They're sort of grandfathered in, so they can't make a change, right, they couldn't make a change unless the city was willing to make a change.
Okay.
I will, I will just point out, part of the interim use, uh, requirements for an IUP, uh, one of the requirements is that the conditional, or the interim use, uh, will not be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity uh, for the purposes already permitted. So this is something that would be reviewed with every single application, so things like sound and, and, ours operation would be something that would be reviewed with every application.
One other question on that line, so say another one was approved. It, it went ahead, and then the neighbors realized that it was, it was a nuisance, there was a lot of barking involved, then then what, what is the recourse for, for the neighbors, once it's been approved and it proves to be a problem?
Well, you can address specifically, but there are already noise, uh, hours of, like, you know, your neighbor can't play our music at one o'clock in the morning, right, you could make, uh, a complaint, so there, if it became an issue outside of what is already existing, other, like, um, so, let's say all of the complaints came during hours that were appropriate to have sound, then I think it would have to be, um, something that's brought up to the city in terms of making amendments. If the nuisance complaints were happening outside of the appropriate hours, then there's action that the city could take to remove or restrict the IUP.
Correct, yeah, yeah, if they're, if they're violating any of the conditions with the IUP, so that would include normal hours of operation and, um, even just, you know, if they're exceeding specific noise concerns that are conditioned within that interim use permit, the city does have the option to revoke that.
But if the dog barked constantly, if many, many dogs barked constantly all day, eight hours a day, between eight and five, that would be okay?
So, uh, I'm guessing in, in a situation where we would issue that interim use permit, there would be a condition in there that would address that, you know, you know, hours, if there's excessive amounts of barking, um, you know, we have a condition that addresses that, and if they violate that condition, then that IUP can be revoked by the city, and they couldn't do that operation anymore on the site.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see something in there that, I don't know, like, you're in, um, Bellwether, Red Barn Pet Retreat is over in that area.
But that one is not, does not fall under this.
No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't, but sound wise, and actually in a more dense area, the sound doesn't travel as much either because buildings and trees and everything, it, it doesn't travel quite as much as a open area.
Um, I, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, you know, uh, I, I too have a concern about sound, and I noticed, um, when you did your research, there were, you mentioned a STC rating of fifty-five. So, if you were to add a sound requirement for this, how would you determine what that would be?
So we have to do some more research as to what that threshold would be, because that S, STC fifty-five is specific for commercial kennels that share a wall, like if it was like a strip mall, or if it was like a duplex or something like that, I don't, uh, that's what that fifty-five is, so I don't know if that'd be applicable in this situation, so I'd have to do some more research to understand what a, that reasonable.
Yeah, that, I don't think that would be applicable for an exterior noise, cuz that's, that's typically interior noise.
Right.
So, I think you, it, it would be, I'd be curious on how you would manage that noise level on the exterior.
And that's where it might be, well, I think it might be like a temporal, like, you know, how, what's the duration of the barking, is it exceeding a certain amount of times that the condition that we would wanna add to it, or?
And I think before we go too far down that road, we need to back up to remember that during the time when there were four operating, there were two complaints and none of them were noise. And so I think that we, what, what the staff report showed me is that the change in the ordinance amendment back in two thousand and eighteen was unnecessary, and I do not wanna be somebody who sits here and creates another unnecessary, um, restriction uh, on a business that is, is operating, when there hasn't been proof or history of it being an issue. And so, at this point in time, um, I think that because each applicant would need to come through requesting an IUP, uh, that the changes listed to the ordinance amendment, um, are their standard to what we would make to any, uh, ordinance amendment moving forward, and so I'm not sure that there needs to be, um, anything else specifically added. Um.
There's always a first time for everything. So, I, I don't think, personally, I would, I would prefer to have something regarding noise. I understand.
No, where I get concerned is I live in the rural residential area and I have livestock. Let's say my chickens, or my horses, or my pigs start making more noise than somebody, like, at what point is it, um, is it that something that needs to be regulated versus something that is appropriate for the space that you have, they have enough acreage. The dogs have been in here the whole time without making a sound. And I just think that the city, through the interim use pro- uh, permitting process, has the, um, ability to make changes as necessary for each interim use permit. So in the ordinance, why would we preemptively restrict something, um, through additional cost or unnecessary, like, you begin to put up, um, a, a hundred percent opacity of fencing, and now you change the look of a rural area and the ability to perceive open space. Um, and that's a huge cost as well, and at what point does, um, for which type of, um, outdoor animal is that required?
Before we go down that rabbit hole, I would again go back to, I, I, I personally am not looking for any type of physical item that you would place to limit so- sound. I just think it's good to have that looked at. So, when somebody comes in, it's not saying, oh, you gotta, you gotta do STC seventy-five for your exterior, or whatever. I'm not, I, I guess that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, and you mentioned area, I mean, if the more area you have, the better it's gonna be. So, I just would like to have the city cognizance of the sound issue before they go through. I'm not, I'm not requiring any type of limitation, physical limitations.
So I guess what I'm concerned about, cuz in it, it, in the resolution, the language of the resolution, what are you asking to be added that's not already in there, that would make sure that the city is aware of the noise issue? Because if we're not willing to, uh, pass this as it exists, then we would need to suggest an amendment to be made.
Where's the resolution?
It begins on page, it says, it's, there's page five of five is the staff report, and then page one begins the resolution. So this is the terminology that makes the resolution that would actually be changing the amendment that's listed in our city code. So if there's something in here that you want to specifically include, then we need to propose what that language is. Otherwise, I believe that, uh, more than one of us is willing to just pass it as it exists. But we do need a three vote in order to have a motion pass. So if there's something that exists in this resolution that you want to amend, then that is, uh, what you would propose.
You see some of these setbacks in the review of the other nearby cities, um, the outdoor animal areas must be at least a hundred and twenty-five feet. I don't know if that would pose a problem for your particular one, but that, you know, that's double what, the seventy-five feet on that double bit? Maybe changing the seventy-five feet to a hundred and twenty-five, make a difference. And it's consistent with what other cities have done.
Do you think that would be an issue?
That would be too much of a problem.
I guess my question would be, how do you know that it is, um, one, going to address your concern? And because it is limiting them the space that a business owner owns, but can use for their business. And so if we're asking someone to do that, I would wanna make sure that it would actually address your concern and be necessary, otherwise it just feels like we're restricting.
Yeah, and I have liked her burn about an existing community business, making them make any changes that are gonna detract from their mission. When they've had no complaints for twenty years.
As I said, I'm not looking for any kind of physical limitations.
No. Maybe it's okay with the permits being required.
That's true.
Yes, sir.
If I, if I can real quick, um, it's regarding the Red Barn Retreat and such, we've had this discussion with that, with that owner and such. And it, it's, it's, was one of the conversations that that owner has a policy of no barking. And I don't believe that. Dogs bark, period, happy dogs bark, stressed dogs bark. You can't control, um, knowing, knowing the Clippertons and the group that they have training their dogs. It's, it's mediated, it's, it's watched, it's, it's monitored by them. Um, it, Madam Chair, you had a good point, I've got cows across the street, I've got two barking dogs that are probably a mile away from my place, but I live in the country. It's going to happen, I call up, I know the owners. Hey, could you do something with your dog? Yeah, they're barking, we're sorry, we'll take it, 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 it's just, it's, it's a community, it's what it is. Um, Commissioner Lynn, you talk, and this is a twenty-year operation, and what they do, um, by helping the veterans, what they do by helping, and, and, and it's not a favor to us, it's, they help with, they help with Zeke, and now they're helping with Rocky. I mean, it, it's a good business, it's doing well, they're monitoring such. I understand the concerns and noise and stuff, but that's where we have to step in and make that determination to put it to, in my mind, to put it to paper and, and stipulations related to some stuff. It, it's just more regulations and stuff that makes it difficult to do. I'm waiting for Red Barn to open and being able to drive by and not hear about a dark barking dog. He, he made the comment, he has a contract. Your dog barks, they don't stay here anymore. So it, it, dogs bark, and, and again, if they're being mishandled, misused, stuff like that, they're gonna bark more. It's a signal for us to intervene and such. I, I think for right now, it, it's something good. I didn't realize, as a council member, that we had the stipulation no more. Um, I, I did not know that, I did not know we had four out there back in two thousand and seventeen, so I learned it right along with you all, but, this is a good business, they're doing good things, adding the training side, that'll help train out some of the barking. We, we've got our dogs in, and we don't appreciate our dog, it barking in our thirteen-acre parcel, and what she does, it's a, it's, hey, there's something wrong, if somebody driving down the driveway. It, it's, it's not obscene, but when it gets obscene, it is time for, for our police department, our public safety group to intervene and take care of those things. So that's, that's my input on it. Um, again, Red Barn, huge building, beautiful place. Um, a lot of people from Bellwether, Amberly, and the community up in that general area are all for it. It, it is crazy how much support there was for the Red Barn Retreat to grow and such, so.
Okay, that's good to know.
It, it's a big, it's a big deal, and I think it was before you guys got on here and stuff, I think we're,
Yeah.
we're working with, uh, with the owners and stuff, to, to do things right. We're volunteering and, and Jeff R. and stuff, it is. I don't know how close the houses or anybody is to you, Marine and stuff, but it it's a distance away and such.
I'm the first property out one seventeen. So you don't drive in, buy anything, please drive by me. And my house is the closest to the building of anybody. I don't like barking dogs. And I have six, you know, because we breed, right? And they don't bark. They bark at home. Hey, you know, they don't do that. Derby's dogs aren't bad to bark. So, yeah, I I mean, I'm not a bad bark.
But this point in time, unless somebody wants to make a recommendation to add something to the resolution, um I would make a motion to pass the resolution as it exists.
Oh, second.
All those in favor, they aye. Aye. And anyone opposed, they nay. Okay. And then that takes us to uh so then the recommendation for the ordinance amendment goes on to the city council.
His tails.
Yes.
His tail's been wagging.
All seasons, uh K nine to introduce the guests.
Yes.
And they get Jase and.
Billy.
Billy.
So my husband and I have been breeding dogs specifically for service dogs for veterans. And we've built Minnesota Veterans and have trained. Um we've done fifty nine dogs, and we have currently six that are from this group that are in training. And when they get to be about sixteen months old, eighteen months old, um they'll replace them. They're veterans. So the building that we're repurposing has been on our property um isn't for outside clientele. We're not adding to our business. We're just simply having a dedicated space um for these dogs, cuz we'd like to, instead of doing ten a year, we'd like to do twenty to twenty five, cuz there is a demand for it.
Well, and I was gonna ask, may I ask how you place? Like, what is the process for placing a dog with a veteran?
Uh word of mouth, we tell people that we're here, and they reach out and they can apply to receive a dog. Um they usually get clearance between, we have a clinical psychologist that we work through that do the screening for us. And then also, like, usually they're working with the V A. The V A approves them, saying that they're um well mentally to care for a dog. Um and then we do a um hundred and twenty hours worth of direct dog training with the dog that paired with them. And really, we don't pick the dog for the people, usually the dog peep.
Picks the person.
They choose to um partner up with. And um it's, it's very satisfied for ten years. We self-funded and done everything ourself. And we placed our dogs through other agencies, but over time, unfortunately, we found that not all nonprofits are ethical. Sadly, and um and I just couldn't send our dogs through that anymore. And so we decided that we were gonna just do it from start to finish, instead of doing eighty five percent and leaving the last ten percent to somebody else that really didn't have the relationship. So these dogs, you know, live in our homes. Um they're wept in my bedroom. And. Yeah, um and so it's, it's really, I mean, it saves lives. And I guess we did all in zero cost to the veterans. So there's no cost to them for any part of any process of receiving a dog. And so.
How how old are the dogs when they, when you pair them with a?
Usually sixteen to eighteen months.
Oh, really?
Um dogs are since trained, um you know, because we start at birth, we really have a jump on it versus a lot of people will raise dogs and then say, oh, eight, nine, ten months old, I'm gonna turn this into a service dog. We genetically tested all of our dogs to the point where we know they'll have zero health issues um to distract them from their ability to serve as long as possible. And so we've got dogs that have actually been in service for nine years now. And um they, our goal is to try to have them be in full service capacity for ten to eleven years, maybe twelve. So um and with the genetics that we have, um we don't keep male stud dogs. I just keep dogs that I like. We get the semen from them. We
Artificially inseminated.
Turn on to become service dog. So we keep the the girls. So I've got great grandma, grandma, mom, and kids at the house with me. These guys are six months. Yeah. And this is, you know, this is like
Well behaved.
The crazy stage.
Yeah.
This is active. Um we train with all of our um volunteers. Jenna's been with us at all seasons for like nineteen years. Almost the beginning. Katie's been with ten years. Yeah.
Short timer.
Five months real even with them.
Yeah, I mean, again, I mean, I can't stand barking. I know dogs bark, but like your dogs had an abnormal experience, but that's what you see when you have commercial cattle, I need to say it, but in commercial buildings and things of that nature that aren't.
And that's what I'm, and that's, I think you guys has found ideal, no complaint. You guys have been there forever. My my concern was more opening it up and what are the restrictions and what are, you know?
Yeah.
What are repercussions?
But yeah, I mean, our hopes is that really eventually with the property um is that ideally I'd like to potentially donate this to the nonprofit and have it live on through younger people.
Yeah.
My son and then, you know. Yeah.
Thank you guys. Do an amazing job.
And just real quick, and I know I get to say more when I sit up there the next time you come in front of us and stuff. Someone like Marine and Jeff um and these kennels, these two kennels that we have, so to speak, and stuff, help us write this as a strong ordinance that's still respectful and honoring not only the dogs, but the people that own those kennels and the neighbors that are close to me. Uh the input that we had from the neighbors um around Bellwether and stuff, oh my God, we need this. These guys are great. This group is great trainers and stuff. That that's the support I like and appreciate as as I'm the councilman and as a member of this community that these folks do a good job. But I will do everything as long as I'm sitting up there to prevent something that isn't gonna fit into our community or we've got owners that don't care as much as these guys do.
I mean, at our property, just, you know, there's no signage, there's no, if you drive by, you wouldn't even know who they are. So and we kind of prefer it that way. You know, we don't advertise, we don't do anything. People have been coming to us for over twenty years.
I know a lot of us.
I just was at the birthday celebration of a uh one hundredth birthday for a World War Two veteran on Monday. And that just have a very um deep uh with a lot of friends. And um so anyway, I just really appreciate um what you guys do and that you're working to improve the lives of people with invisible lungs. So super appreciated. Thank you for coming and introducing your guests and.
Thanks for bringing them. That was fun.
Yeah. Like some surrounding high schools and things like that for kids that need to build their college resume and things like that. So we've worked like Idris High School, Idris Academy, Montello High School. You know, the El River kids, just really for ability for them to, to get them to the stage where they consider all their public services accessible. Work to get clearance to go everywhere. We then have people, because the more people that get handling them, it it strengthens their skill. When they're at this juvenile phase, they stay with their like foster razors and things like that until their skills are perfect. And then, you know, we've got high school kids that will pick them up after school, take them for three hours. You know, go to Menard, slam lids, make noises, drop things, so that they work on picking up, you know, things. Sitting there, not having any distractions for noises, because they have to stay focused for their job.
Sign me up. I love off County Route Thirty. I'm coming.
We we try to do as much of that as possible um to increase their skill set, but also allow other people to contribute. Because at the end, you know, for ten years now, we've had a graduation for our dogs over at Rush Free Call Corps. And we just get three, four hundred people to come every year. And to see that kind of final handoff um and the changing of lives for those people, like the narrative that I had sent in. It's amazingly different. And then you create this, you know, brotherhood and sisterhood of the people that go on and support the next generation that gets the dog. So since we quit sending our dogs out, we already have a group of veterans that have come through a couple of times with their graduation. And then they come back and we start the next training group, and they like to help with that, to help those other veterans. Part of it, you know, and so we do lunch with us Wednesday, usually with the veterans at a different restaurant, hopefully. And you have to see Chivas River Inn, you know, with the. You know, uh or Big Boar and things like that, or Short and Tall and stuff like that. So we're around quite a bit with the dogs.
Awesome.
And they are all like, yes, they certify, they go through flight training, and we got them on airplanes. And we have kept two on this week that weren't there for flying the dogs, so. They get complete, they're not fake service dogs. There's a difference. There are pictures. So and the identity of space will be very much appreciated to train, yeah, people to.
Well, we really appreciate you guys coming out, and we appreciate the work you're doing in our city. I think it makes it just another reason why it's a great place to live, great, great bunch of people. So appreciate that.
Thank you.
Have a good night. You're welcome to stay for the rest of it, but it gets kind of boring. It gets kind of boring.
We're almost done. Good job, you guys. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so when we do graduation, we will send the things to everybody. Probably give off said you were, yeah, it's released, yeah, so.
We'll probably see you at the river end. I'm there too. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this point in time, you have something else for us?
Yes, um so one item that I have left is um Mayor McKee requested that I just notify the commission of some online resources for you guys to look into and keep up to date with um some of the bills that are being reviewed in the legislature. Um cuz there's a lot of them right now, and it's important, because a lot of it does impact development in the city of Portland. So um on our webpage, corcoranmend.gov, you just hover your mouse over our government. And then go down to council. You can see a tab come out for twenty twenty five proposed bills. Um and this is updated regularly with all of the different bills that are being reviewed at the state. So um these are all being voted on at separate times, but it's important just to um just keep tabs on them and understand how that impacts your role as a as a planning commissioner.
And some of them are just in committee. So like when you talk about being voted on, they're not being voted on at the floor. They're being voted to get through to committee or not get through to committee, et cetera. Anybody have any questions about that?
I think I read there's a second committee deadline. They 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 canceled the hearing on the twenty fifth, March twenty fifth. And then there's a second committee deadline tomorrow, actually. So I I think that's just for the hearing. I don't think it's to literally vote on them, right?
There, no, uh, right, it's committee. And so a lot of times, like, some of it is follow up from what's been presented in the past couple of years. So you, I I believe if you were to go to each proposed legislation, you could uh like on the um website of not Corcoran, but the state legislature, you could see the history. Um so to the best of my knowledge, nothing has made it to be voted on. Every, nothing has come out of committee in the past few years. So but I do think that, like, the fact that a lot of it is repeated information year to year, um that is something to watch out for. Oftentimes, legislation at the state can take ten years of being reviewed each year before it gets voted. So I just think when you start to see a pattern of it coming up time and time again, year after year, it's something that um now is the time to get input on it, just like when we're here, like, and we appreciate the public input. By the time it's here, a lot of times, the best time to give input is a few years before. And I think that's sort of why this exists. So um if something is of interest, definitely reach out to your uh representatives. And and give your thoughts and opinions on that as well.
And I did see in a, in a few of these was, I don't know what you call it, a stipulation that infrastructure had to support whatever it was that they were wanting to do.
A lot of it, a lot of it is not to scream fire or anything, but a lot of the stuff that is in here would not work with the current destruction sewer water, bigger pipes, things that have to be dug up. It would just blow up. And a number of these takes away the city's
Ability to have.
Ability and stuff to thoroughly think over some of these developments and those kind of things. One of them would just throw everything out Willie of belly, and it would allow seventy five foot, I think the number one is apartment buildings anywhere in uh not, not developed part of Hennepin County and stuff. But actually, the whole state would, it it just, some of it is just so out of this world.
Do you have a feeling that any of these may actually pass and be put into law?
So I would just.
It's enough that they're up there, and it it's something that our legislators have to know.
Yep.
Say it.
Nope, I'm not gonna say it.
Oh, come on.
Nope. Um, not gonna say it. Okay. Anything in the planning project update or the city council report? Does anyone have any questions for the planning project update for Dwight? Um or I hope you all had the opportunity as well, just to, I mean, I guess I'd like to introduce Seth. Seth, do you wanna introduce yourself and who you are and when you joined the city?
Sure, yeah. Seth Gellman, nice to meet you. I'm the Community Development Administrative Assistant. So um came from Hennepin County and uh worked at for the state courts and the legislature. So happy to be here working for the city. So thank you.
Welcome.
Sounds like a great resource. Do you have any questions about that or just wanted, you know, chat about it?
I was gonna say, do you live in the area?
Yeah, I live in uh Golden Valley.
Oh, nice.
Okay, so if no one has any questions for Dwight regarding the uh planning project update, does anyone have anything for Commissioner Baron Camp?
I did hear something recently about the mobile home park on Maple.
Yeah.
Way being purchased.
Yeah, the way I understand it has been purchased, the new, the new company owns that, and there's some challenges to that ownership change. And not much we can do as a city, other than to assist both sides and such. But yes, it was purchased and the new company is making change. How's that?
Are they planning to redevelop it?
That, no, I did not, nothing to any of us as of yet. It's just, it's, there there was a time, um right away, there was some uh we've got ordinances in our city related to installed vehicles, idle vehicles, they need to be registered to to exist and stuff. There's a number in a, in a few of those residents that are not roadworthy, are not licensed and stuff. And this, this company that purchased are cleaning some of those things up and stuff. And there's, there's a lot of, of things go both ways, but it it's not for the city to get involved. It's private property. It's their contract. It's it's their conditional use permit. It's they're, they're following up with what's going on. So um they, the, all of those citizens are welcome in our community, and many of them have been here probably longer, most of us. And uh that's their home that we respect. I respect that very much and and respect uh what they're doing and and how they're going about it. But there is some changes going on that some of the folks don't like. And that's, that's a problem between those folks and the new owners, so. Uh we are here. Public safety is very much involved, keeping everybody safe and state neutral and trying to mitigate everything that is as much as possible to leave some of those issues, so. Great question.
Does planning expect the Kiranimi and the new Mahavishnu Temple to go for it on May first?
Yes.
Like realistically.
Both of those are planned for May first, and I believe there's another application for May first, just that you have it.
It's my birthday. I was kind of like, maybe it won't, maybe it'll be.
You're a.
Once you get to a certain, once you get to a certain age, Lindsay, you can celebrate your birthday any day you want.
You know what? All right, you're right. You're right. Okay.
In addition to that, the Saint Thomas.
Oh, all right, yeah. All right.
What better way to celebrate your birthday?
I would agree. I went to preschool there.
Okay, so if nobody has anything else, then I am going to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed?